Okay, are we turned on?
We are.
Okay. So, we're gonna call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Can I have a motion for approval of the present agenda? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. And, we're gonna start out with the first of two public comment periods. Actually, do we have any public online?
We have four logged in right now.
Okay. So, this is the first of two public comment periods. This public comment period is intended to give stakeholders, CCSD stakeholders, the opportunity to speak about items on today's agenda. There will be an open public comment period at the end of the meeting to speak about any topics pertaining to the district. So, if you would like to speak for a couple minutes, raise your digital hand, which is an icon at the bottom of your screen, and I'll give you just a minute to do so. Any interest? Okay. As I said, there will be a second public comment, but we're gonna move on into board member comment. So, we're about to embark on a new school year. Some of the sporting has already begun. I understand games maybe this week even. Got power back in the high school. Does anyone wanna speak some words here?
I'm sure I'm not the only one in this room that shares the enthusiasm of a new school year. I'm certainly sure all of our students cannot wait to get back to school. I bet they've been counting down the days. I can't wait for it. But, I think it's, you know, hopefully, it seems based on, you know, any restrictions that, and I'm sure we'll get a full report from Sal on this, but I look forward to a very healthy, more routine, more normal year, and I look forward to seeing how that plays out this year.
I just wanna...
Go ahead.
Many people outside the profession of education don't realize how much work goes into the summer for administration, and this team's done a great job. I know everybody's gotta be a little toasty at this point in time. Tomorrow, things, as you know, get lighter with staff around, and Monday even better with the students, or Tuesday even better with the students. So, great job this summer for everybody who's in the... Alright, thanks.
Okay. We are going to move on into the superintendent report from Dr. D'Angelo.
Awesome, thank you. I was just thinking, I think you had your staff day yesterday or today, tomorrow? Okay, 'cause Ichabod had theirs today. So, some districts do their, front-load their professional development prior to the Labor Day weekend, and then they'll probably invite students back on Tuesday. Our opening day will be Tuesday, I'll get to that in a second. So, first, I wanted to begin by acknowledging Brett Fortran, former assistant principal at MED and now our new middle school principal. It's actually his daughter's birthday, so I appreciate Brett sticking behind, and I wanted to formally congratulate him. I know the board's aware that you'll be appointing him tonight. So Brett, if there's any last-minute donations or anything you wanna leave the board, cupcakes, cookies, anything like that, now's the time. But, no, Brett's been with us for four years. He's developed some amazing relationships with parents and students and staff at MED. I think he's gonna be in a very unique situation where he's going to graduate with the fifth graders to sixth grade, and he's also very familiar with the seventh and eighth graders. We have a nice public relations release pending tonight's approval, and we'll get that out to, we've notified staff. Tomorrow, we'll formally make sure that all of the families and the community know of Brett's appointment tonight. So Brett, congratulations, and you know you have your colleagues behind you in ensuring that you have a successful tenure as principal at the middle school. So, that's the first item. Today, I did send out a notice to staff and to parents, as Chris alluded to, with all of the, I guess they're not so much COVID protocols as the standard operating protocols for this year. As, I'm not gonna go over them, but basically, most of the restrictions have been lifted. You know, there's no use of masks, there will be no testing of unvaccinated employees, there's no contact tracing, there's no physical distancing. The only thing to make note of is we will still provide PCR testing in our nurses' offices. Again, that's strictly with parental consent or on the behalf of staff, certainly staff consent. The funding for that is being provided through some carryover funds with the ELC grant through Columbia County. That will be something that continues on. That was very well received last year in terms of identifying the gold standard of positive cases. So, we will continue to do that as well as the Columbia County, the other Columbia County school districts. As Matt mentioned, we finally crossed another threshold with our power being restored to the grid on Monday, thanks to our contractor, LaCour Electric. Thank you to Nisek and everyone on staff, including Andy Davy, who, I had to go back and remember that it was actually a couple days before graduation when that incident occurred. So, it's been, it's been two months that we've been limping along on the generator with certainly less than ideal conditions and brownouts, and sometimes the generator just flat-out stopping. So, we're happy once again, for the third time, to have that resolved. And just to set the record straight, we now have brand-new everything from 203 through three poles, through underground cabling, to a transformer, to underground cabling into our switchgear. There is nothing that isn't, hasn't been replaced. So, we will continue to have our fingers crossed. We'll give you an update in the coming weeks as to the final cost for this last endeavor. And again, I think that's gonna be an insurance claim, correct? Okay, we'll be, but Mr. Chuddy will give you an update in the coming weeks. Opening day, again, will be Tuesday, the 6th, when we invite staff back in. That will be a traditional opening. I'll make some opening remarks at the beginning, and then we have a keynote speaker this year, Jimmy Cassis, and we've just given you a copy of his book, Culturize. I know we have a couple board members who will attend. If you are able to make it, you're more than welcome to join us. My remarks will begin at 8:30, his keynote's at 9:30, and we will conclude by 10:45, 11 o'clock. And then the staff will be on their way for faculty meetings and getting ready for welcoming our students back on the next day. I know Deb has worked with you. We have secured the facilitator, and we have the board retreat in the books for November 1st. We have a little bit of time. As we get closer, we'll talk about starting time, confirming the starting time and the agenda for that evening. And, I think that's, as Fred had mentioned, a lot of work has gone in this summer. Curriculum writing, administrative retreats, discussions. Today, we met with the entire administrative team, including all of our non-instructional supervisors, and I think, you know, from everything, from Andy reporting that our buildings are almost ready to go. A couple hallways this weekend, and we'll be all set. Technology, Mr. Olson updated us that we're ready to go. Barb's ready to go with food service. And transportation, Josh has everything in place to get our students to and from their homes safely. So, I'm just looking forward to kind of a fresh start, a renewal, and hopefully not being distracted by COVID so we can get back to the very important task at hand, which is to give our students the best opportunities, academic opportunities we can. So, future updates in regard to that coming up. I know in the parking lot, we have a request to hear more about our PPS, our counseling, our school social worker and psychologist program. We'll do that end of September, early October, and we'll have periodic updates in terms of our instructional plan and report out on our, on some of the testing results in the coming months. So, that's my report for tonight. Any questions, concerns? Okay. Thank you.
That was record time. Okay. We have two committee reports. Start with C-Plaque. Beth, Mira, who wants to? Haven't met. Okay. Okay.
Basically, what, we talked at the last meeting primarily about the plans that they wanted to do going forth with the public library, what people in the community are interested in, what parents are interested in, what kids might be interested in. They did have many meetings over the summer, but they didn't get much feedback from anybody. And so, they're looking to be going out again and going directly to like senior citizen meetings or VFW meetings or whatever, to directly talk to the public, town board meetings, whatever, to get more feedback before they go forward with their new plans. As in policy or what they're planning on doing. Other than that, we talked about the building and that it, you know, they were working on the heat issue on the way up. I have, this is Jen's, I don't know if you got this. I have Jen's latest report.
Yes, the latest report, I have that. That's for the next meeting, yeah.
Yeah. There's gonna be, they'll be looking for a new part-time person at the library because one of the women is moving out of the area. I don't know about what the back-to-school are going to be, but I have to tell you, my grandson and I participated all summer in the preschool story hour, and she does a really nice job. And it's like, this next one will be a STEAM one, which is really exciting for him because somebody comes in and they actually get to do like little experiments or things. So, for a two-year-old, it's kinda funny to watch him get that involved with it, but he likes going to the library. So, I don't know, I heard a lot of old people talking, what older kids said that they liked what they had done over the summer, but I have no direct feedback on what the programs were.
She's very happy about the air conditioning now is fine at the library. They've got that completely, very thankful for that. I'm sorry that...
So, that was, you know, COVID regulations have been, you know, brought back because there haven't been any real, you know, COVID issues right now. But, they were very flexible through the spring, and the staff is willing to go back and forth, you know, SDB. That was basically what happened.
I have a bit of trivia for you. We have Kate Girard, as you know, working on grants and compliance, and Kate is working with Jen on collaborations where we could seek not only more money for the library, but work on potential grants for our schools for which the library could service. In doing so, and I've been here a few years now, we've always said, we think there's a couple school districts in the state who are in our situation. And so, through some research, Kate figured, Kate did some research so that we could figure out finally, instead of saying, oh, we think there's a couple districts. There are two, we are one, the other one is Newburgh. So, I'm putting, finally putting a name with the non-description of saying, we're one of two, and it's actually Newburgh. So, just a little trivia for that.
That's interesting. It'd be interesting to talk to Newburgh about their library experience.
And I'm sure, you know, Jen is from Downstate, I think originally, so she probably has some familiarity with that. And I do wanna just amend my report to just say that, one thing I neglected to say is that Brett's promotion created the vacancy at MED. Once you officially appoint him tonight, tomorrow, we will post for that position. We are going to post with a two-week period of time, and then we will analyze the candidate pool and come back to the board with a recommendation, knowing that New York State law requires that teachers give 30-day notice. So, it could very well be the end of October, early November, before we have a replacement. And we're gonna work with the administrative team to provide adequate coverage for Kristen in that interim time period, so.
Okay. Well, it'll be exciting to see if any of that community feedback boils up after your next meeting. Should we plan to add a C-Plaque item to the next agenda? Okay. Alright. Chris, facilities?
And Mira, I'd love to have you contribute some insight when you're ready. Just to give an update, you know, to recap last year, we spent the year starting to look at the building, certainly with the guidance of our design team from SEI. We identified various areas of the district that are in need of significant improvement, upgrade, repair, and we have a good start with that. And, so that was last year. So, moving into this year, where we are now is we're actually reaching out to department heads. I believe on the 15th of this month, there will be a meeting with department heads to begin to discuss the details of various programmatic needs and upgrades to the facilities. So, that will be exciting, specifically that's in the high school. And then, we plan to make a presentation this fall to the board to present the ideas that the committee has shared and agreed upon relating to our next couple of projects. So, I would say, just, there's a lot of exciting things we've talked about. It has not been easy. You know, you start really big in the clouds, and you have to find ways to work your way down into reality. I would love to stay in the clouds, but I think we're at a good spot, and I think I'm excited to discuss the specifics coming up likely next month. Yeah, so the 25th is the date of October. Yeah, we're looking to present to the board, and at that time, we'll have some very detailed information, a lot of things to discuss, and it'll be an open conversation. We're excited to hear the board's input, and we'll take that input back to the committee to make revisions and refinement.
Okay. So, with that, we're gonna move into consensus agenda. I just have, of course, a comment. I'd like to... Welcome Brett.
Yeah, like I said, it's his daughter's birthday, so he asked that once.
Well, we can still clap for him.
Okay.
I'd like to welcome Brett into his new endeavor as principal. I don't know if anyone else has any questions, but just one moment. So, R13, be it resolved at the Board of Education, except consensus agenda G through I is written. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Great. Okay, so now, questions or comments? This, other than the very notable administrative change here, which I'm looking forward to this year, I don't see anything here of note, but if anyone has questions, now's the time on this consensus agenda. Go ahead.
How many, are we full? Do we have everybody hired now we need? Are we still looking for some?
So, we, we had a resignation today. So, we're not in terrible shape. I think we are down an ENL teacher and now an AIS literacy teacher. As you know, ENL is a tough, difficult subject area, content area to fill, so we're, we will keep trying. And the AIS, it was a vacancy that's not even on the board agenda. That came in this morning. You know, just as a side note, remember, we hired some temporary positions because of pandemic funding, and those, as those people have applied for full-time, not full-time, but tenure-track positions in other districts, it's not uncommon that they're going to take the opportunity to go work someplace where they're gonna have, you know, some job security. So, that's kind of what's happening. But, we, we're in pretty good shape overall. We only had a few people leave this year as opposed to previous year, so I'm very pleased with that. I'm a little bit at a loss. We will, you know, likely have the ability to put a substitute in there, but that's not gonna be in any way, shape, or form what those students deserve. So, we'll have to come up with some sort of plan to do that. We've tried to find other individuals who might, you know, I think everyone's exploring other opportunities in terms of uncertified yet qualified. Are you on a path? Can we get you to a path? There's a lot of flexibilities being offered in terms of people who are, have a trajectory, but I don't have any leads on that particular position.
Looking at the policies at all for services for them?
That would be an obvious choice. Also, we are, I should tell you, there's one other maternity leave for a school psychologist that we're trying to fill till November, but we have a plan there because we currently have three school psychologists. Remember, we hired, we hired a fourth. So, if we can't find someone, we had someone hired for that position, and then a full-time opportunity in another district came up, so they gave us notice. So, we are going to spread the three school psychologists that we currently have over the three buildings to provide opportunities for coverage there. So, we have a plan in that regard.
She'll be back before the CSC starts?
She'll be back for Thanksgiving. Yeah, yeah, she'll be back. So, and we will, in that particular case, that's a little bit easier of a solution because we can, we can compensate some of the current school psychologists for some extra time and extra work to accommodate for that extra workload. The ENL one's gonna be tricky. We've successfully hired a couple over the last couple of years, but we haven't been able to retain them. One individual moved back to Syracuse or Western New York, and we're just having difficulty.
And that, that position, that was today?
The AIS one was today. ENL was a couple of weeks ago.
A couple of weeks ago.
Yeah. So, we've posted that, and I don't believe there were any, there were any candidates at all.
I'm just curious, when, when, you know, someone at that position gives resignation, are they asked to provide any, you know, any exit feedback or anything? Does that often, I mean, I don't know...
If it's, if it's outside of the explanation, like in this particular case...
It was clear.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
We have designed in the past an exit survey, so if it's not so clear and we wanna get to...
The question just came from saying, you know, several hires happened. There were several years, but, you know, it's like, I mean, in obviously different circumstances, right?
Yeah.
The problem isn't that we haven't retained them. The problem is they're hard to hire, right?
Well, it's both. Like, the couple ENL teachers that we had came to us under circumstances where their husbands were relocating to the area, so we were a good hire. In one particular case, that opportunity for their spouse did not work out, so they moved back to Western New York and they followed them back. In those specific examples, I don't think there was any one, there was no items within our control that, within our control to retain them.
How many kids does it impact at this current?
At the elementary level? Three, two or three, four maybe? It's a very small number. It's not that, but not insignificant.
Statistically, last time I interviewed on this inside the district, you know, statistically, we had plenty of cover. The real issue was just the diversity of grades and buildings. Does it make sense to make Spanish language competency a criteria for TA or aid hiring so that we have that capacity in-house or emergency fill?
I think any other constraint that we put on hiring of teaching assistants or aides would further complicate. I mean, we're having trouble. We just, I think today, interviewed the remainder of the TAs and aides that we need for this school year. There's not an abundance of applicants in that area either.
That wouldn't also, wouldn't solve the problem of the ENL education.
No, but it would solve the emergency coverage problem. So, if this is gonna be a recurring pain point, I...
It may make the circumstances better for those individuals in the interim, but again, without TOCEL or ENL certification, we're still out of compliance.
So, something that I just wanted to add to this is that, and I think I might have mentioned it before, along with another teacher, we are part of a grant at Clarkson, and we're taking T-cell methods courses. So, so there's also a group of teachers at Ichabod that are taking T-cell methods courses, and it's, the new cohort will open up in January. So, and now that I will have been through the courses, I can speak to, you know, what they are with our teachers, but the reason that I took them was to better support this population and also knowing that our population can change and thinking about learning opportunities for students over COVID. So, my point of this ramble is that we do have, between myself and one other teacher, we will at least have the methods courses to support students in this space. It's a stopgap, but I'd like to work closely with Ichabod to see any, if any of their teachers actually go for the certification, if it's something that we can potentially share. So, it is something that we're aware of and that we're trying to build some capacity internally so that we might be dinged with certification, but I just want you to be assured that our students will be taken care of.
That's comforting, for sure. Is it a bridge certification process for that? Or is it the full, like, what's the course requirement to get T-cell?
So, with, what Clarkson's offering is three of the methods courses out of five, and they're offering full tuition, full textbooks. It's asynchronous, so, you know, you can do it at any point in time. But, they're, they're saying to teachers, if the remaining two courses, that they will likely find funding for them. So, if a teacher comes forth and says, I would like to be certified, they will also, I believe there's something where they will pay for their certification exam, and they'll also pay for them to attend two conferences in New York State. So, it's, yeah, it's a great program.
It's not right now, but it's, I like that, it's predictive, right? You know, we've had a couple of hires in this field, in this position. We know that even if we hire somebody now, we run the risk always of losing them again or something, so.
And we knew that that was a wonderful opportunity, and through Lisa's efforts, she secured the relationship with Clarkson. I just think the timing of it, teachers coming off of COVID, asking them to do anything in terms of additional coursework was a tough, was a heavy lift for them. I'm hoping, as I believe you are, that come January, as the fog starts to clear, there may be a few other teachers. Because if you're early, early career, having that certification is maybe a very valuable certification to have here and elsewhere, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the consensus agenda? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? I'm gonna take a left turn here before we go into items for future agenda. Grace, we went through board comment, and I forgot to point out to you that that's also your comment slot. So, if you have, okay. Alright, that's fine.
Mr. President, that brings up a good point, though. Can we write that in as an agenda?
It is a separate agenda item on every other agenda for summer and not, and not knowing if there was any activity and not knowing if Grace was coming tonight, although she did respond, yeah.
Yeah. Grace gets her own report during the year.
We'll have...
But also during board comment.
Yeah.
Also during board comment.
Student representative will be a separate...
Okay.
The first football game is Friday, though, because I.
Is this seven o'clock? Yes.
Yes.
All right, guys, so we're, we're in items for future agenda, I want to talk about committees, but before we go into that, does anyone have anything else? Okay, so I have, I sent the committee change request form out a few weeks ago, I'm guessing not everyone has seen it because I only have three responses back, so. Beth, Chris, and Muriel, if you can track down the email in your box, you should be able to fill out the form right in Gmail, or click the link. Yeah, but then I just sent it again a few minutes ago. It doesn't need to be right now. So that's part of the committee process, I want to get the rest of the feedback in. The second thing is, it's been a few years, and, and Pat, you observed, do you remember when the last time public call went out?
Yeah, I'm actually.
So it, it was last 2016 when we made a formal public communication soliciting committee involvement, except for, I believe, C-Plaque, we've been a little bit better about it. But for the board committees, we have not, so it's, hold on here, it's kick back to my question list. So it's audit, facilities, finance, and policy. Now, the state has some guidance on audit, some requirements, I believe. And, but we also have some guidance written into the charters of these, of these committees on what's expected of committee members, et cetera. So Pat did a write-up on some guidance for the communication that's going to go out for policy and for finance. We don't have any feedback from facilities on, do we want anyone who wants to raise their hand? Do we want to ask for specific skill sets or criteria or qualifications? Same thing for audit. Does the board want to add anything? I am sort of the kind of guy that just like, I'm happy to let people raise their hand, and then we can figure out who they are, but just wanted to ask before we send out the communication. So our, our board retreat is November? We can't wait that long. No, no, I know. When is it, November? First. Do we have the ability to add a committee after that if we decide? Oh, if, if one gets chartered, right, it would be, well, we have, there's two types of committees that the board can have, they can have a charter committee, which is mostly what we're talking about when we say committee. We can also do what's called an ad hoc committee, which means it's not formalized, but there's still rules you have to follow, because it, public meeting laws still apply. So following the board retreat, we may decide to do ad hoc committee work, or we may decide to do a formal committee, the problem with chartering a formal committee is that it's really, we're a small community, and it's difficult to get enough participation in here to do all of the board stuff, so more committee stuff is more stuff, it's difficult to get people to do. But other than that, we have the freedom to charter if we want, or not charter and just do ad hoc committee. Go ahead, Fred.
Yeah, so to your, to your question about whether or not we should post or advertise or whatever by, by skill sets, we don't get a lot of buy-in, right, so maybe we should, maybe if we tell people what skills we're looking for on these committees, people will understand what they can contribute, I think people like to feel like contributing.
It's a great idea, because people probably, not everyone's got a great imagination for what a school board does, so.
Yeah, and sometimes these committees are, you know, one word, like, facilities, what does that mean?
Yeah.
If we talk about what it means, maybe people will want to join that a little bit.
Yeah, it's a good idea, I, I'm in support of that. Okay, so Pat gave me some feedback, if you guys have any notes you want to send, just shoot them over, and what I'll do is I'll try to communicate them, or I'll try to condense them down into something short enough that communications won't slap me on the wrist for. And then it'll go out, we'll do, we'll do newspaper, Facebook, email trio. And we'll try to get that out over the next 10 days, I think. And we usually get responses pretty quick, if people are going to raise their hand, they do it quickly. But we should probably also give them a deadline, so. How was that communication sent out? We, it's always, it's always that, it's Facebook, email, and it's the same way we would.
We could, we could do radio, we could do anything that, that you guys. We could also do a press release, which might get, you know, get the couple newspapers to do a little story on it, so.
Okay. So we can ask communications to draft it that way?
Uh huh.
Okay. Do we want to consider coupling this, it might complicate things, but you know, we do have potentially a vote coming up early next year, and I don't know how we might reach out to the community in a, by, you know, cross-chain way, but something mentioning that, I don't know. School vote, you mean? Just, just, I don't know, I, I don't know, I'm just.
No, I think you're onto something, I mean, we, when we do our, whether it's, we do some marketing and communication around a potential facility, a capital project, or for next year's budget, we, we do send out newsletters and we could make some, if, if this ends up being a process by which the board is trying to seek involvement, we could have a section that said, you know, annually, the board is seeking volunteers to serve on a variety of committees. If you have something that you're passionate or interested about, please, you know, contact the district clerk so that you can, you know, you can find out more information, I mean, we could get more aggressive about getting the word out that you're looking and seeking involvement from the community.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's. That sounds great, we could do the digital version of that, too, on the board website. Go ahead.
Is there a restriction on staff being on those committees?
Only if they're.
Mutually exclusive?
I don't have a good answer for that, I, I think only if there's a defined conflict, right? Although we, we may, as a board, we could decide that we don't want the complication. But I think legally, we'd have to identify whether there's a conflict. We, we already have a method for that, the, the biggest problem really is they'd have to recuse them for anything that impacts their own job, right, or, and, and the difficulty there is like, you know, that, that the staff are lined up in the school, and the committee work really slices across the whole school. So it, it might be difficult.
Sometimes what you see is there'll be an internal committee that parallels the board committee, and then there'll be an administrative liaison between the two. So that, you know, say we're doing finance, we got Mike, he may have a committee that sits to discuss finance with Sal that are all school employees, and then when they meet with finance committee, Mike represents the voice of that committee, so that they have the voice of the team.
Yeah, and that, that happens already. Both from the perspective of inviting the staff in, but also sometimes the board gets invited into district committees.
It's kind of the way we're working with facilities, too, right, we've solicited feedback from employees via a survey, and now we're engaging them in person in a few weeks in terms of being part of the design process, so that's kind of their opportunity to get engaged in the process and then kind of inform the work that the facilities committee does. Audit's a special committee on its own, so there's a pretty prescribed membership there.
And also with the understanding, community committee, committee membership is usually just slave labor. So we're, we're, these people already work for us.
It's a huge undertaking, but, but let's not downplay it, like, we need, if we do better when we represent the community, and, and we know better the community when they represent for themselves, so we, we folks out there, we really would like you to join committees, it would make everything better.
All right.
On the policy or the finance committee?
We have, we have community.
On finance and policy?
Yes.
Yes. And their attendance is very, is good, and, okay, great.
Yeah, but not only do we not want to take them for granted, because they've been contributing quite extensively, but it's always better to have more contribution, or maximum effective contribution, right? I guess, so.
So again, if you put, put it out with skill sets and descriptions, maybe we'll get more.
All right, so I'll, whatever you guys send me, I'll put together, I'll consolidate, we'll get something out sometime next week. I might give communications the flexibility to, if there's a lot of beginning-of-school-year stuff, maybe push it another week if that's, if we need to do that.
Yeah, we're, we're tending to stay away from any commitments before the 12th.
Okay, yeah, so after the 12th, probably. All right, so that's it on committees. And we're back into second public comment, so unless someone has another item for future agenda. Okay, so we're in the second public comment, this one's open to CCSD stakeholders that want to speak on any topic impacting the school district. Anyone has, was saving their digital hand, they can raise it now. So this was a brief meeting, I'm going to move on to public comment. We are going to go into a brief, I hope, 25-minute executive session to pertaining to the matters of employment of a specific individual. Chris, could I have you volunteer for clerk, if possible? Okay. Yes.
Motion.
Can I have a, be it resolved, the Board of Education, enter executive session. Can I have a motion? Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. And can I have a motion to appoint Chris Spencer as district clerk pro temp for the executive session? All in favor? Any opposed?